Good morning. Welcome to the Wednesday, September 13th, meeting of the Board of Franklin County Commissioners.
Commissioner Stottermeyer?
Present.
Commissioner Harris?
Present.
Chair Dickinson?
Present.
Commissioner Dunn? Vice Chair Weymeyer?
Present.
All right, please rise and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. You may be seated. All right, we have one item of correspondence and organizational business today. Rebecca McFarlane from the Frontier Extension District is coming to give us an update.
Good morning.
Morning.
I checked with Janet and she checked with Derek and I just wanted to come by. And one of our staff members plans to come by once at least a quarter and actually just provide an update. We appreciate the opportunity to continue to have space down the hall for our office. And of course, we're a frontier district now, so we cover three counties. But just want to give you a quick update. I've got some general brochure to share with you and then I'll just share a few other items.
Thank you.
So I do serve as the District Director. And as you can see on the brochure, it lists all the different agents or educators that we have on staff. You'll notice at the very bottom, we have a vacant horticulture and natural resources agent position. So that position is currently open and we're hoping to get some quality applicants here. It closes next week. So I do have a position announcement. If you know of anyone who may be interested in extension or has a background in horticulture, please have them reach out to me.
Is this like the Conservation District that they do? The government puts the notices out or do you guys do that?
Kansas State University does quite a bit, but we also, they also would like us to do like a local marketing and publicity. So we have been doing that on our social media. I shared it with KOFO as well as put in the newspapers. So September is National Suicide Prevention Month. And I just want to give you a quick update on some of the work that I've actually been doing in the area of mental health and particular suicide prevention. I'm actually a certified QPR instructor. And QPR stands for Question, Persuade, and Refer. And just as people are trained in CPR and of course, the high make maneuver, it helps save thousands of lives each year. People train in QPR, learn how to recognize the warning signs of suicide crisis, and then how to question someone about their situation, persuade them to say with us and to get help and then refer them to someone. So since last year and in partnership with Advent Health of Ottawa, Advent Health provided some financial support, excuse me, to provide these sessions. I've provided six QPR sessions since last fall and trained approximately 80 people here in Franklin County in QPR. And what we really do is talk about some of the myths surrounding suicide. And dispel those myths, excuse me. And then we talk about some of the warning signs as well. Some of the situational clues to look for, some behavioral clues as well. And so, once people are trained in that QPR method, then we hope that they feel more comfortable, more competent to actually help someone who's in a suicide crisis. So I'm going to just share a few results of that, of that training because we do do a survey evaluation before and afterwards as well. So prior to the training, 21% of the participants felt that they were likely to ask someone if they were thinking about suicide. So we know it's really difficult for a lot of people to even talk about suicide and to say that word. And so we, again, we want them, it's not going to be a comfortable, I guess, maybe conversation, but we want them to feel more competent and be able to say that word and ask someone about that. So after the training, 54% of the participants felt like they were likely to ask them, someone, if they were thinking about suicide. So in fact, it is increasing their knowledge about how to ask someone about suicide. There was a 44% increase in the number of participants who responded high when asked to break their knowledge of how to get someone for help. So again, we're increasing that knowledge. And then lastly, there was a 45% increase in the number of participants who rate their knowledge as high when asked about persuading someone to get help. So again, we're increasing that knowledge, helping people to feel more competent or comfortable asking that question and getting help as well. So that's all I want to share with you today. If you have any questions, I sure would be happy to answer those questions. But again, we thank you for your continued support of providing space. And then also, we know that you're well aware of, of extension and maybe a lot of the things that we do, but we want to continue to, to update you.
Just a comment on the suicide. I see that Senator Roger Marshall has a new emphasis on suicide in our farming, farming community. So, you know, it's everywhere, all over.
And I answered you bring that up. I'm going to share more because I actually serve as one of the co-leaders of our Stress and Resiliency Team through K-State. So it's a statewide team. It's a transdisciplinary team. So we have ag educators, family consumer sciences, 4-H and specialists. And about three weeks ago, I got, received a phone call from one of Senator Marshall's staff members saying, "Hey Rebecca, we know you're on this team and you certainly, you have, you're leading the effort in the Farm and Ranch Stress Assistance Network", which is part, which is part of the farm bill. Of course, as you know, they're discussing the farm bill right now. And she said, "Can you share with me your, share some information about the work you're doing? I need it by seven o'clock tomorrow morning." Thankfully, our project associate actually had gathered information because she submitted an application for a team award through K-State Extension. And so I reached out to her and was able to submit information to her. And then about a week ago, another staff member reached out to us to actually share information about the roundtables that were happening. And tomorrow, they're actually having a Zoom to talk about that too. So yeah, Senator Marshall is very aware of the work that we're doing in extension and making sure that we have those resources to farmers and ranchers and the ag industry as well. And so, and that's some of my work too. So I could talk about this for a long time, but I won't. But certainly if you're interested or want more information, please reach out to me.
I think we, or at least I did, I got an invitation to that Zoom meeting.
Yes, yes.
All right, thank you. Any other questions or comments for Rebecca this morning?
Thank you.
All right, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Public comment?
We have one?
All right.
Do you want to read the thing or do you want me to call her up?
No, you can come on up and, and then please state your name and address. I will read this. It says, "Citizens are desiring to speak on an item not on the agenda. May do so at this time. Discussion is limited to five minutes and the commission will not take action or discuss items at this time. Discussion should be limited to matters of county commission business and public comment is not permitted in regard to personnel matters or on pending legal matters. Items introduced under public comment may become agenda items at a later date." Good morning.
Good morning. I'm Carla Griffith. I live here in Ottawa. My question is, my concern is that Evan Hospital was here about four months or four weeks ago and were asked some really good questions. And they said they agreed to come back in two to three weeks. It's been four weeks and they are not here. I was wondering if they are ever going to come back and answer, answer the questions that were put forward to them at that time. That's all I need. Thanks.
All right, thank you. The consent agenda today. The only thing that we have on the consent agenda are the minutes from last week's meeting. So I just need an
Motion to approve consent agenda? Right.
Commissioner Stottermeyer?
Yes.
Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Commissioner Weymeyer?
Yes.
Chair Dickinson?
Yes. The only, we have two items business today. The first one is to consider approving the KDOT Project Programming Request Form for the proposed Texas Road Bridge Replacement Project. David Lee?
Good morning Commissioners. The, the two items today that are on your agenda are both related to the Texas Road Bridge Replacement Project. The first is a form that KDOT is asking us to sign. It, the gist of it is they want to make sure that we have funds available to pay for the non-participating costs. The non-participating costs are all the preliminary engineering, the design, right-of-way acquisition and utility relocation. The estimates for that total about $108,000 roughly. And so, we have that on hand, so it's not, not an issue. The, the current construction estimate is just over $960,000. That's without any inflationary cost that you see in some of the other paperwork there that, that we've got. So there, KDOT is willing to, well, the program now is that they pay 100% of the construction and construction administration costs associated with these projects. So it used to be there was an 80-20 split. That at least currently is no longer a thing, so they'll pay 100% of that. So we're only on the hook for the non-participating costs. So I, our recommendation is to move forward with this and sign this, this particular form.
This bridge program isn't one that we have to do funds exchange because they're federal dollars with a lot of stipulations or?
So the, the federal fund exchange is a program that every year, we have the opportunity to exchange funds. Historically, we have always used the Chip Seal Project as, because those dollars are always way past the, the maximum that we can allow, we can get. So we'll use that project again to recoup those dollars. But I, related to that, since, since you asked about it, we have always received $130,000 to $150,000 in that federal fund exchange because of some changes at the federal level that is requiring the state to do some additional things. Those funds are going to be reduced by about 15%, I think, which is not great, but you know, it is offset by the work that KDOT's doing on our behalf statewide. So that's just aside.
Plus we don't have to pay, plus this is 100% instead of having us to pay usually.
Absolutely, yeah.
So I appreciate it.
Yes, and so that is a wonderful thing for us.
All right, affirmative motion would be I make a motion to approve the KDOT Project Programming Request Form for the proposed Texas Road Bridge Replacement Project.
So move.
And double second.
Everybody wants this one.
Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Commissioner Weymeyer?
Yes.
Commissioner Stottermeyer?
Yeah.
Chair Dickinson?
Yes. And the second part is related, consider approving a proposal from CFS Engineers for the survey and design of Bridge Number 17 dot 6 dash 20 on Texas Road in the amount of $57,100.
Yes Commissioners, this is the design proposal from CFS. They have historically designed our bridges and have done a really good job for us. And so they are, they're ready to get started. And we, we're, we're fairly confident that roughly a year from now, we can be on the, the letting to get this thing constructed. So this is a fairly straightforward project. There's no historical bridge designation, which
Yay.
I can assure you makes this a much simpler project. And so they're, they're ready to get going. I anticipate eventually we will see a, an addendum to this for geotechnical work, but they, they'll want to get through some design work before they decide how much effort that's going to, going to be. So, but this is for the design and survey and again, they're, they're ready to get going.
All right, and affirmative motion would be I make a motion to approve a proposal from CFS Engineers for the survey and design of Bridge Number 17 dot 6 dash 20 on Texas Road in the amount of $57,100.
Motion approved.
Thank you.
Commissioner Weymeyer?
Yes.
Commissioner Stottermeyer?
Yes.
Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Chair Dickinson?
Yes. All right, that concludes our
I want to thank David for working hard to get this because that was tough. Means we already was awarded one this year. So I think it was pure, a lot, hopefully, hopefully all good work, but maybe a little luck that we did got it.
Pleasantly surprised.
Yeah. All right, so we'll move on to staff reports. We'll start with Derek.
Yeah, just a few quick things. On October 9th, Ottawa University is hosting, it's called the Franklin County Community Outlook Event. It's presented by Wichita State. Last year, I believe, and I don't want to leave anybody out, but Christina and I were there. I believe Dawn and Roy were as well. They, the point of it is to discuss current economic conditions, both locally and across the state. Wanted to give you the opportunity to register because if we want to get it at its lowest price, we need to do so ASAP. I will tell you, it is, it's a very academic presentation. I mean, I, I remember leaving there just on information overload. So it's, it's, I would say less practical, more just data overload. Happy to register, any one of you that wants to go can also get you the information from the presentation so that you can digest it after the fact. I believe that's what I did for a couple of you last year. So it's on October 9th, if you're interested. You can let me know now or after the meeting, whatever you would like to do, but so there's that.
We, we don't have any meeting scheduled for that at the Monday?
It is one to three in the afternoon.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so it won't conflict with a, a meeting.
Got you.
Had a discussion with Dustin Browning recently about community corrections and the JDC. On Monday, he's going to be in front of you with a couple of items. And we were talking, do you all have any desire to go walk through the JDC and see what the, the tentative plan is over there in terms of what we would like to do to, to make that more friendly for community corrections? Or, or would you rather us take another route? The thought being, we could meet, have the study session, recess, and then just go over there. He can walk you through, we can talk about what we're thinking and then be
I think so. I mean, you know, we all know what it looks like, but we don't know what it's going to look like. So I think we ought to know, no more than we enter that building. I mean, you know, we should, I think it's to go where.
Yeah, I would agree with that. And, and we're not talking about obviously any kind of extensive remodeling, but I know it helped me just to have him, you know, kind of articulate what his vision is, so.
And I think there was some of it that was, we'd like the county to do this and, but we're going to do this, you know, kind of thing. And kind of give more of an idea, yeah.
Yeah, okay. Well, then, then that will be the plan and I'll confirm with him. The last thing, I believe all of you know this, but tomorrow, we're having our employee appreciation event. Hope you can all make it. Put a lot of work into this. I think it's going to be real nice. I'm looking forward to it. So hope to see all of you there and that's all I have.
Brandon? Building and ground.
Morning.
Good morning.
Been a little bit since I've been in front of you also. Just wanted to give you a couple of quick updates on some things. The fire alarm system for the jail is finally scheduled to be replaced. If y'all recall, it's been a while ago, but you approved that. Work is part of the district court being done at the same time and the jail was supposed to be done shortly after. And it's been kind of a nightmare, but we've run into a number of roadblocks with that. And we needed approval from the state Fire Marshal's Office as well as our local fire department. And there were, there were quite a few delays in that, but we're finally, we have that scheduled and are finally ready to get that project rolling, which is really exciting. The slab issue at district court, we've been working with BG Consultants on that. They did some bore holes through the slab inside and then one outside as well, just to get an idea of what the soil makeup was like and kind of how to build a plan from there. What we discovered was that, what we believe is, what they believe is happening is that there is duct work that is in the slab from when they built it. Supply duct work from the AC units when they first installed that. They just set it in the slab. We believe that that has cracked somewhere. Don't really know where, but it's cracked somewhere. And so every time the air comes on, all that air is blowing into the dirt, drying it out, causing it to sink. So we're looking at the, trying to figure out what the best plan is to move forward with that right now and how to solve that problem and really what to do. BG Consultants, as far as raising the slab backup, they're recommending foam jacking to, to raise that. Based on what they're seeing, other options just wouldn't be very feasible for that. So that's, that's the best option they're coming up with for now. And we're, we're getting numbers on that portion of it. We got, we're just waiting for a contractor, at least to give us an idea of what we're looking at for that portion of it. But we still need to solve the duct work issue. So that's going to be another, another piece of this moving forward.
Haven't they tried, didn't they try foam in the past?
Well, my understanding is that they tried to do mud jacking in the past. And that was, I don't know when that really was. I don't know if any of you were, you know, here when that happened or recall. That was well before I was ever working here. There's evidence of it. We did, we did find some, actually looking into some of that duct work, we were able to see where it pushed through and cracked some of the duct work. But, so it could have been cracked from that, it could have been cracked from, it's hard to tell. But yes, there was some work done a number of years ago with that, so. In slightly different area though, from where we're looking at now, just down the hall a little ways, so. Just wanted to, I don't know that I've ever really given you all much of a report on like our work orders and kind of how we, how we measure that. So just printed off this little report just from the last couple of months, just to give you an idea of kind of what our monthly work order, work orders look like. In July, we had 87 requested work orders and we completed 85. August, we had 97 requested and we completed 91. That's pretty average about, you know, what we're looking at for, for work orders as far as numbers. And, and our completion rate is really, really good compared to requested. So that really is just a testament to my staff and, and all their hard work, really staying on top.
Is that two people?
What's that?
Is that two people?
Well, that's, I helped out with some of the maintenance stuff, but that's Dustin Mitchell is our maintenance technician. So he's our, he's our only maintenance technician that, that does that. We do have one of our custodians that likes to help out in some of those areas as well. So he provides support in some of that too. But yeah, that's just an idea of kind of what we look at month to month, work order wise. Also wanted to run by you, there's on Main Street, right in front of district court, there is a large United Way sign. I don't know if you're familiar with it. It's been there for a long time. I just noticed the other day, it's, it's a wooden sign. It's kind of starting to rot and fall apart and it just, it's not in great shape. And so that kind of leaves us with, you know, do we want to pursue, you know, asking that to be repaired? Or do we want it to be gone? You know, I don't know. Just wanted to get that in front of you and just get your feedback on what your thoughts are on
It's been there probably 15, 20 years. Been there a real long time.
I don't think they're actually, actually actively using it. Are they, they used to kind of put on there, or I don't know.
Yeah, I don't know. I mean, it's been there ever since I've been here, so I don't know the history of it or anything.
I personally seen kind of less things on the lawn. Tidy that up a little bit, you know. I was starting to say 15, 20 years ago, we didn't maybe have phones in our hands as much. Maybe that was a more logical way to get information out, but now it's such an odd place for a billboard, I guess.
I can reach out to the United Way Director. I don't think she'd have a problem, but
Okay, yeah, that'd be great.
So what's the plan then? You're going to
I'll reach out to
Then why don't you call me?
Yeah, I'll call you.
And then I can let you know. But nobody here has an issue with taking it down if that's the, okay. And on a somewhat related note, Brandon, have you had the opportunity yet to start reaching out landscape architects about the courthouse lawn?
I haven't yet. I just was reviewing a, a list from, oh, it's been a few months ago now. We kind of, kind of talked about some of this a little bit, just some companies around that, that do that. And so I'll be reaching out to them here shortly to get an idea, something put together there.
I don't know if we'd want to do it along with that, but we talked in the past about doing some electrical work out there. For the lawn, for having tip power, for the things that go on out there.
Yeah, yeah. Boy, that was a conversation from quite a while ago. Yeah, we haven't revisited that in, in a long time. I don't remember
Thinking if we're going to be out there trenching, tearing it up.
Yeah.
It'd be a time at least to get conduit in the ground and so we're not doing the same thing again.
Yeah, yeah. We'll definitely add that to the, to the list of our discussions as we move forward with that.
To the extent we can, let's try and prioritize that. I would like to see that project.
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely. Last thing that I had, this just came across just recently, so just wanted to give you a, a chance to chime in on it. The, I guess the Ottawa Main Street Association is, is promoting a Third Thursday event that they're doing September through November. And we've been asked if they could use, a number of vendors could use the courthouse lawn for their events. They'll be Thursday, Third Thursday of every month in the evening. So they're looking at 12 to 18 vendors using that area. So just wanted to get your feedback since that just came across. If you have any thoughts on that, one way or the other. On behalf of Hiram, I haven't reached back out to them as of yet, so. That's something
Other people do.
Yeah, I don't think you would.
Yeah, good deal. That's all I had. Thank you.
Question for you.
Yes, sir.
Just a question. I know why it's gone. The tree on the, May 3rd, they got taken out. Just in the last month.
Okay, was it a long?
It was dead.
Okay.
Is it, do you know where the plaque for that goes? That's a commemorative. I planted that tree in 2005 on Arbor Day.
Oh.
And there was supposed to have been a plaque. I don't know if it was in the ground or
Okay.
There with it and
I will look for that, just to
It was dead. I understand why it's gone.
Well, the, to be clear, the storm knocked it down.
Yeah.
Half of it was dead.
Yeah, but it was dead.
But, but the tree, yeah, when we had that big
Too bad. I mean, we did that, if the plaque would say Arbor Day 2005.
Okay.
That's when, when it was planted. They had a big celebration down there and planted it and had all the kids and old sacred heart come over and help plant it. It's gone, that, that just happened. But I didn't know if this might be the commemorative plaque might be still.
I, I never knew that there was one there, but I'll, I'll check the yard to see.
Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely. Thanks.
Thanks, Brandon.
Kristi, do you have anything this morning? Kristi Hilker from RMA.
Good morning. I just wanted to share some updates about the Wellsville Station and the progress there. I know it seemed like last week, everywhere I went, I ran into Commissioner Stottermeyer. And it was, it was exciting to, to be able to share progress. And I've shared with Derek, right now, the, the building is framed. I've been able to walk through it now multiple times. I am making trips up there weekly and kind of the path that we're going next week. Joanna and I are going to go to get some measurements for signage so we can start getting that ordered. I've been meeting with Tom about the radio equipment and we're going to go and take a look there to see where's the optimal place to put that. So I do have what I need to order as far as equipment for the alert system when we get calls for the building. We also are going to be, not next week, but the week after, a meeting with a janitorial supply vendor so that maybe we can get a system in place for the chemicals that we need for disinfecting and other things to be a little more tidy than a we need for disinfecting and other things, uh, to be a little more tidy than a bunch of buckets just sitting out everywhere on the floor, so some really good things in the works, uh, do plan to continue to make regular visits there and monitor it, if you haven't had a chance to be up there, it really is a nice space and I, I think our crews are very much going to like it. Um, and to wrap things up, right now EMS is really busy time, uh, football is well underway, we also have, uh, cross-country meets, of course, last week we were at the tractor show and we will be at the car show this weekend, and I, that is all that I have right now unless you have questions.
No questions, but I was up there Tuesday, you, you hadn't been there until Tuesday, have you, to Wellsville?
Since, since last Tuesday?
No, yeah, this, this Tuesday, this-
Oh, yesterday?
Yeah, yeah.
No, I have not.
Already got the decking on the roof, they're putting windows in, they got most of the siding on, so they're coming a lot faster than, than we thought we would.
They certainly haven't wasted any time.
Yeah.
Yeah, last, last week, uh, Commissioner Stottlemyre had a picture on his phone and was passing it down and, yeah, pretty exciting, cool.
You've, you've talked with Dustin Corrington about technology?
Yes, I have.
With Brandon about actual maintenance of the property?
Oh, jeez.
You and Joanna are gonna work on a, a story for the website and/or social media? If I didn't know any better, I would say you're excited about this project.
A little bit.
Yeah, yeah. Well, you're doing a great job with it.
Thank you.
Very cool, yeah, I was thinking about things I would not have, oh wow, yeah, gotta do that.
Yes.
Cool, great.
Thank you.
Awesome, thank you. Sheriff Richards, anything for us this morning?
Um, I just have a couple things here, so I wanted to make sure I didn't forget, so I made notes, um, we did go to, uh, participate in Power of the Past Tractor Show last week as well and great weather, hoping that we have good weather this weekend a- as well, um, but I wanted to put a different event, um, kind of on your radar, the National Faith in Blue, um, weekend this year is going to be October sixth through ninth, um, locally we will have events, um, on that Saturday and Sunday, which will be the seventh and eighth. Um, the last few years, we've had a community service day where we've partnered with, um, different congregations to go out and do work in the community for a variety of reasons and that, um, that part of the event can't happen this year, um, just for a, a lot of reasons, um, but we are gonna be having a, uh, replacing that, that time with a prayer breakfast with law enforcement and, um, the faith, uh, leaders in our, in Franklin County, um, and then that Sunday evening, um, on the eighth, we will have what is our traditional public, uh, Faith in Blue event, which they, the, uh, the minister alliance has, has named that, we've kind of transitioned it so it's not just law enforcement and, and the faith community, it's all first responders and so it is called our Franklin County Heroes Event and, uh, so that includes, um, all the law enforcement and fire and EMS as well and, uh, we all work together on a regular basis, we, and we support each other, um, all the time, so we think that it's, it just makes good sense for us to have an event, um, together like this, so then this year that'll be October eighth and it's gonna take place out at the, uh, Community Revival Center Church out there, I-35 Montana, um, out there, so.
What time?
Um, I believe it's gonna start at six PM, but I will be sending out a, a media release and, and I'll make sure that, that, uh, that Derek gets that so that you guys can all be aware, uh, of that for sure. Um, we do have the, uh, car show coming up this year and I just wanted to, um, and Commissioner Stottlemyre and I have talked about it a little bit with some of the different security things, um, we meet and we work with the, uh, with the police department, they take the lead on it since it happens in their city, but I wanted to give you guys a heads up and to let everyone know, everyone is experiencing staffing issues, uh, not just law enforcement here, but all the agencies that come in as well, um, we are, we still have a, a good security plan in place, uh, we, we, uh, we believe that it's gonna be, you know, a good event, just like always, um, but it's gonna look different from our perspective, um, we have some different, uh, techniques, some different technology, things like that, that we, that will be implemented this year, um, just a different way of going about doing business that, but, uh, we do not believe that it's gonna lower, um, it's not gonna lo- lower the, uh, level of service that is provided, but it is gonna look, it may look different and so we don't, I just want you guys to know that if, if you get out there and it looks, it looks way different, it's, it, it's not because we're slacking off, it's, we're just taking a different approach and I just, I think it's important for, for you and the, and the public to know that, um, we, we meet regularly about those things. Um, along the lines of, of staffing, um, you had asked, um, I believe it was you, Don, that had asked if staffing never started to become an issue, wanted to hear about it, we are seeing a little bit of that now, we're not nearly as bad as the, uh, as the, uh, surrounding, uh, counties, uh, on staffing, um, but even though we, we do have some vacancies, um, we are still able to provide all of the services that we were before, um, and I believe we're still doing that at the same level and a reason is, is the quality of our staff, we have some, we have very, we have very good, good staff and, um, I can't sing their praises enough, they are still staying with it and sometimes it means that they work some extra shifts, but they're not complaining, we've, we've got good people. Um, as you may or may not know, I also have someone that works in Janet's office who works for us part-time and we ran into a little crunch here, was it last week, Janet, that we really needed some help and I called Janet and said, "Any chance you guys can help us out?" and she came through for us and so I appreciated what Janet did, allowing Betsy to come over and kind of help us out, um, and we, um, also, we've been working with Dustin on some technology to kind of help us through on that, uh, we thought we had a solution, but Dustin's a lot smarter than we are and so he came up with a much better solution for us and, um, so we appreciate that work and then, uh, again, I've said it before, but, um, our H- our HR director here is just a wealth of knowledge and she's phenomenal, so, and I just wanted to, wanted to thank, uh, Amy for, for the work that she's doing, to really helping us out, um, right now and she, thank, this week I sat down in her office and said, "Look, I'm, I'm in uncharted territory, I just need some guidance and some options" and she was pretty quick to provide that, she, she, she did a fantastic job, so you guys should, should know that. And then the last thing I have and I don't wanna take anything from you guys, because I'm sure you will say it, because you were all there, but last night I, I did attend the, uh, the Farm Bureau Legislative, uh, Farm Tour, which is my favorite event to go to and, but, um, that organization, the work that they are putting in, I believe, is not just beneficial for their members, but everyone in this county benefits from the work that they're doing, I truly appreciate what they do, um, for the county and I appreciate being able to be a part of that, but that's all I have unless you guys have questions.
Well, I was sitting at the other end of the table and I, somebody that was sitting across from me was like, when you were talking, "We're so lucky to have him."
Well, thanks. Thank you.
All right, thank you. And Dustin, you're smarter than most of us, you have anything else to share this morning?
Actually, I'd like to wait a couple more weeks to get through the go lives and then get to mention them.
Awesome, all right. Joanna, do you wanna share anything with us this morning? All right, uh, I guess that moves us on to David Lee.
All right. Have several, uh, several things to update you on this morning, um, the Old Fifty Project, we're within a week of being ready to release those plans, inspects, uh, uh, to begin the bidding process, we have a, uh, tentative bid date of October seventeenth, um, uh, so we're looking forward to that, that's just right around the corner, so we're awfully close to, uh, to, to being ready to go on that, the plans and specs will be available through, uh, the Drexel Technologies Plan Room, it's a, um, common plan room that, um, a lot of folks utilize, so that, uh, shouldn't be any problem for the contractors and we've had interest from, uh, uh, two local contractors already, um, heavy interest, so looking forward to that. Um, also had, yesterday we had a project update meeting on the, with SCS engineers on the landfill, uh, they have a footprint and they are, uh, plugging away with, uh, the design on that, um, uh, our footprint now encompasses seventy-eight acres, uh, as a comparison, our existing permit covers about twenty acres and we have approximately twelve years of life airspace left in that existing permit, uh, once we are, uh, have the entire seventy-eight acres permitted, on the low end, we're looking at about a hundred and fifty years of, of life at that facility, uh, that's on the low end, uh, and I have some schematics here, I'd be happy to, if you have, would like to kind of see where we're at with things, I'll be happy to show that to you after the meeting.
That seventy-eight acre figure encompasses, or utilizes some of the new land?
Absolutely, yes, sir. Yeah, that's, that's how we're able to get that, that big a footprint and it also takes advantage of our entire property now, um, even where the sheriff's gun range is, our transfer station, all of that is included in this permit, um, and it'll be decades before we need to address relocating those facilities, uh, long after I'm gone, uh, that'll be somebody else's chore, but, uh, we're trying to, you know, the goal with, with this project and another one that we're, we're gonna talk about in a, in a second is to, uh, make good decisions today that, that don't, um, negatively impact, you know, those that come after us, uh, trying to be good stewards and, and make good decisions today that, that will stand the test of time, so I'll be happy to show this stuff to you after the, after the meeting. Um, also the Public Works Master Plan out at our shop, uh, we talked about that just over a year ago, we had a presentation. I'm ready to, to move forward with that project and, uh, on Monday at the study session, I've got, uh, things ready to go for that, um, uh, so we'd like to have Bartlett West come down and walk through the, um, walk through the, the proposal to move into the design phase of that and so we'll, we'll kind of back up and, and show the work that's been done to date and we'll talk about the steps and things that, uh, that will be coming forward, so that's, that's another, um, big project, uh, there may not be any actual dirt moved for quite a while, but, uh, getting through the design phase will give us construction estimates and those sorts of things, again, so that we can start, uh, planning and, and doing this, uh, in a conscientious way and, and, and a smart way. Chip seal, uh, the chip seal is done, but striping should be, uh, should be, they should be on site, uh, week after next, uh, we're out kind of doing some final brooming and that sort of thing right now to prep for that, so that'll be, be nice to get that project finished up and then, uh, first of August, we should have two, we should have recommendations, uh, for, uh, two new end dumps, uh, we've spent a lot of time working on our specs and, and visiting with various vendors about, uh, different possibilities and, uh, we've sent that out to them and we're waiting on responses now, uh, they should have that back here in the next, uh, week or so, couple weeks and that'll give us time to evaluate and, and bring a rec- recommendation back to you, uh, to move forward with that and then finally, um, KDOT has, uh, they call, call them local consult meetings, basically what it is, it's a listening tour, where they have these events a- around the state in each one of the, uh, KDOT districts, uh, they're coming on October twelfth to Iola in our District Four, uh, from nine to twelve and I wanted to, uh, invite you all, if, if you wanted to attend, uh, it's an opportunity to, uh, uh, what they're doing is trying to get a feel for what the transportation priorities are from region to region. This listening tour, this consult meeting gives us an opportunity to share our transportation goals and it also gives us an opportunity to hear what other communities are, uh, what their priorities are, um, in, in the past meetings that I've attended, uh, they will take the group and kind of divide them up into manageable, uh, groups, we will have a breakout session where we get the opportunity to visit and share ideas, um, and then they bring everybody back together and they report that out, so you get a, uh, a, a good idea as to what folks in the region are, are concerned about, what their wish list is, that sort of thing, uh, it'd be a good opportunity for you all to, to participate and, and really learn a little more about KDOT and, and, uh, what's going on there, so.
Again, the date is?
October twelfth, that's a, that's a Thursday and it's from nine to twelve in Iola, so not very far away. So if you'd like to go, there, there's no registration or anything else, we just, we just attend, but, um, certainly, you're welcome, just let me know.
Okay.
And I think that is, that's all I've got.
I, I was, I had not been on the new chip seal road until last night on the way, so Old Fifty and then, uh, Sand Creek and it's nice.
Yeah, yeah.
It wasn't dusty and there weren't rocks flying, I wasn't at that part, but, yeah, it's a good job.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Janet, all right, move on to commissioner comments, Don Stottlemyre.
He just brought up something on the KDOT, uh, deal down there, um, do they send out deals to the cities too, to-
Yeah.
Attend that?
Yes, sir.
I know, just to bring that, to up this stuff, I know Wellsville's really been complaining that, the lack of contact between KDOT and there's a lot going on up there right now and they have said that they just don't have any contact at all, it, there's no, no communication, they can't get communication, you know, if you have a new person, there is a new person now, I think, in the, in-
I don't know that there is a new district engineer yet.
I know they-
The, the, the district-
I'll make sure that they're aware of this, so they can have, or they can pass the issues on to you.
Yeah.
Can't talk about them, but that must be quite a few.
Yeah, the, um, the gentleman that, and I, I, he's getting ready to retire sometime around now, uh, I'm not sure if he's retired yet or getting ready to, um, but, uh, in my conversations with, with him, uh, and he's been here before, uh, every time I visit with him, he brings up Wellsville, so he is aware-
Okay.
-that they have concerns, now what he's doing on his end-
But I know, it mentioned that term mean they have no rapport of our contact, so, direct contact.
I'll, uh, I'll see what I can do about that.
Thank you, uh, yeah, I want to, I won't go into too much because I was talking about last night, but it was a very nice, I'd never been up there since they took that over and made that ant bees up there flowers and, and, uh, Farm Bureau put on a very nice deal and, uh, out in the middle of sunflower patch, it had been very well done, tastefully done and I thought they did a good job, they had a lot of people there from, uh, Farm Bureau that, uh, represents the, the organization and the county too, uh, they give us a lot of feedback, I thought, oh, you, I know I had to talk about it quite a bit, so I'll just leave it at that, that it was a very, very well tended and very well run and a very nice put on, uh, the, the deal. I went to a chamber meeting in Wellsville the other day, uh, they had all new board members, so it's a revamped kind of deal and, uh, but they are working on trying to get a new website put together, uh, treasurer announced that the, uh, they're up seven members and that's pretty good for a small town, come up, seven bits and, and the biggest thing about it is they've made a new layer of membership platinum, which is a higher dollar deal and, and several of them have signed up, businesses, uh, companies have signed up for, for the platinum level, so that's always a good sign. Uh, went to a rantill meeting the other night, um, they had their first six o'clock, they, they had to be at seven, but it's six o'clock, they had their very first coach court session that they actually, that was kind of interesting and they moved, flew forward on that really good and they've cleaned up quite a few places down there and sites and, and, uh, brought up a lot of issues by having a court, I know they've never had a mobile home regulations, county does, we, they don't, so they've decided, you know, they need to, you know, put something in there, but they didn't jack and there's never been any, you know, many cars, so they're gonna put together that, uh, I didn't realize they got it the month before, but they worked, working with the path or he ran for a couple of years, yeah, but they got the fifteen thousand dollars for a part of the commission, which they've been working on for a long time, uh, they get a, they are applying for a one point three million dollar upgrade to hold the water off, water leak, and if they get it, they'll, they'll be a three hundred- And if they get it, there'll be a three hundred thousand dollar forgiveness tied in. I don't know. I know that's what they had. They did a lot of work tied up, carried down down there in the last year. Want to bring my husband to the car show this week, going to Vegas. If you want to plan for it, you're doing your own, not much for a son. And other things, I just like to take, share the ladder with you. And our title, I know, our company's first thing on everything, all the bodies, and the law, and the law. And then process, and it's a package. And Brian, Julie, Helen, all the south there for five, ten, and so everybody that takes a lot of money to put it on. The county, the state, all the states, all the states.
All right, cool.
I'm not bad.
All right.
We have a question about Advent Health. You can jump in if you want to help me. But they did drop off the information they kind of committed to sharing. And there are a few things they felt like they needed to go back to their board on for some guidance before they could come back and have a substantive discussion. So probably that two, three week initial comment was hopeful on their part. And of course, they don't answer to us. We could invite them back now. But I'd sure like for them to be able to come back with complete answers and all that, so. Have you had a meeting? Who was your meeting, sir?
Yeah.
So, yeah, we haven't had one since then. I mean, they were true to their word on bringing the information they agreed to. So I'm sure they'll be coming back and you'll make sure that they're on the agenda ahead of time. They don't just drop in. So everybody will know that they're on their way. Best we can do, because we don't control them, so.
All right, I did go to the City of Ottawa's budget hearing meeting last Wednesday evening. They are increasing, they're not, they aren't staying revenue neutral. They are increasing their budget. And also I did not attend the school USD two ninety. I do understand that there's, is going up pretty substantially also. At the, the City of Ottawa is still moving forward. I think it's twenty-two or twenty-four new residences, basically kind of behind COFO. Besides Walmart. That's exciting when we have new developments like that. Otherwise, I attended two meetings yesterday morning. One was the Chamber Monthly Meeting. And then the Farm Bureau meeting last night. You know, it's, it's, that the commission feels it's important and went, all five of the county commissioners attended. They do have a big part in our community, farmers do. And we understand that ag is still a primary business in Franklin County. But, you know, when they, when they go to the capital, they are not just thinking about farmers. They are thinking about homeowners, landowners, rights, water rights, all the things, a lot of the things that we, are important to all of us. So anyway, we do appreciate them and the opportunity to get together. And we get an opportunity also to talk to, to see people that represent us in Topeka. And representatives, other representatives that represent us in Washington, none of them were there, but they all had representatives there so that you could reach out. Otherwise, that is all I have. It sounds like we have a nice meeting on Monday and our employee appreciation banquet tomorrow. And so if there's nothing else?
So much.
Thank you.